Welcome everyone to the Neshofer Regional School Committee Regular Meeting of January 3rd, 2018. Calling the meeting to order at 6 o'clock. Our first item on the agenda is Citizens' Comments. Before I start entertaining Citizens' Comments, I've got a couple of things I want to read to you folks, so bear with me. The first thing I want to do is make sure everybody understands that school committee meetings are business meetings that are held in public. They're not town meetings. So at a town meeting or an annual meeting, you can walk up to the front of the room and you can speak into the microphone and anybody who wants to talk can, and sometimes there's debates. That's not what happens at a school committee meeting. This is a business meeting. We are bound by district policy, district policy and Mass. General Law on how these meetings are going to be conducted. So I'm going to review generally as I have in the past with the policies, but I'm also going to share with you the Mass. General Law that dictates what happens in a public meeting. We have two policies for the district. One is Policy KE, and in a nutshell, that one basically says that the session is intended for brief comments or for input of information that requires little or no further discussion, not intended for debate. There's also Policy VEDH. That's the one that guides me in identifying, do we want to have public meeting, or public meeting, Citizens' Comments? Because we don't have to have Citizens' Comments. I want you all to understand that. And the time limit is a general rule. It's a chance for you to share your comments. It's not a chance for us to have a discussion. We have other venues for that, as you know. And your comments need to be directed to me, lucky me, not to the school committee or individual members. We can't have you speak to any individual, whether it's a student, even your student, a staff member, or a school committee member, and we cannot hear complaints about them. To ensure different viewpoints, I'm going to ask that whoever speaks doesn't recreate the comments of the speaker before them, because we want to give people a chance to have an opportunity to share different viewpoints. If I ask you to stop speaking, and if you, and the reason I would do that is you're out of order, or your comments are out of order. If you persist, I can terminate this chair. Let me use the third person here. The chair may terminate the individual's privilege of address. Now, we also have Mass. General Law that protects public meetings, and I am going to read that section of the law to you, and I want you to understand that we're going to hold to this, especially given the event of the last school committee meeting when we were in this room. It's Mass. General Law 30A, Section 20G, for anyone who wants to look it up, and it says, "No person shall address a meeting of a public body without permission of the chair, and all persons shall, at the request of the chair, be silent." I'm going to stop myself here. One of the things that school committee members learn when we first get on the board is there's a difference between "may" and "shall." "May" says you have a choice. "Shall," you don't have a choice. That's what you have to do. No person shall disrupt the proceedings of a meeting of a public body if after clear warning from the chair, a person continues to disrupt the meetings, the proceedings. The chair may order the person to withdraw from the meeting, and if the person does not withdraw, the chair may authorize a constable or other officer to remove the person from the meeting. Thank you very much to the Bolton Police Department and to Town Manager Don Low for having police presence here tonight. I'm hoping this is not something we have to continue to do based on what happened at the last school committee meeting. At our last school committee meeting, three residents shared their comments with us. Each speaker was passionate, articulate, respectful, and appropriate in their comments, and we do genuinely appreciate you bringing those comments forward to us. Unfortunately, we had to recess the December 6th meeting due to a Stowe parent who chose to interrupt our meeting, and according to his own admission, quote, "had a deliberate intent to disrupt," end quote, our meeting. Those actions upset many people in the room, both folks sitting in the audience, school committee members, and people on the administrative team. The vast majority of people who come to speak to our meetings respect the guidelines, and we do thank you for that. But if there are further disruptions, like the one we had on December 6th, which occurred in one of our schools, one of our safe spaces, I will, we will, exercise every option we have to protect our meetings and the people who attend them, which may include suspending Citizens' Comments for the foreseeable future. We don't want to do that. We want to hear what you have to say. But if something like that happens again, the number one thing in education, when I first came on the school committee was, and it was drilled into us, safety is the number one. It doesn't matter what we're talking about. You have kids in this district. Safety is number one, and in our schools, safety rules. So if that happens again, we're going to suspend Citizens' Comments. Okay? So I'm going to take a few comments tonight. I am going to ask that people are cognizant of what's been said in the past and what anyone who goes before them tonight says as well, because if we start to hear the same comments, I'm probably going to stop you and ask that you not speak, because we've got a lot to get through tonight. I'm also going to ask that we maintain the three-minute time limit. I know that sounds rigid, but given the fact that we're going to have folks speaking and we've got a lot on the agenda, I want to make sure we get through that. So in deference to you, so that you're not cut off at the last minute, and I don't want to do that, I'm going to ask Lynn to give you a 15-second heads-up, just so you can wrap up your comments. Okay? All right. Who has a comment for us tonight? One, two, two people. Okay. What I would love for you to do is to give us your name and the town that you're from, and if you could tell me what the agenda item is that you're referencing.
Sure. My name is Joelle Spear. I live in Stowe, and I'm referencing the kindergarten item on tonight's agenda.
Okay.
So I just want to say thank you all for allowing me the opportunity to speak, and thank you for what you do for the towns. I think it's great. In regard to current statistics, according to the Department of Elementary Education, 83 percent of Massachusetts is enrolled in free full-day kindergarten. Only 56 communities charge tuition. We are one of those communities. In March, you voted to increase tuition $150. I would like to see that bus turn around, so that we have a plan. Maybe it's five years, maybe it's 10 years. It takes a while, but I think we should turn that bus around till kindergarten is free. The state of Commonwealth has spoken. People want full, three-day kindergarten. Kate Hogan has reached out, I believe, to the superintendent for a meeting regarding this topic and pre-K, just to get her handle on more ideas and get the conversation flowing, and I hope that the parents can be part of that process too, so that we can have some feedback. This meeting time is very difficult for working families with little children, as you know. So why full-day kindergarten? Maybe you think it's too much for the kids. I have a document that I'd like to pass around, because I know I'm limited to three minutes, so if you can just take one and pass it around.
Could you give those to Alita, and she'll get them to us?
Yep. There's been several studies that have been done over the country stating why full-day kindergarten is more beneficial than half-day for children. For example, it allows less stress for the children by allowing a more consistent schedule where you can space out the activities or playtime in between. Full-day kindergarteners spend 30 percent more time reading and 46 percent more time on math, and they have more instruction time for learning activities such as group lead or where the kids can initiate activities, which may be out of the realm of the academic purposes, but it really is helpful for the kids. In a study in Philadelphia, 17,600 children were studied, and it finds that low-income families perform better and save the districts millions of dollars through the reduced grade retention in first through third grade. So I could go on and on, but you have the document. The further comment is that the PowerPoint presentation originally had a bullet point about lottery. I know you have since taken that out, because that was a subject for discussion. I would beg of you, please, not to bring back the lottery. We're already behind 83 percent of the state by not having free-folded kindergarten. The lottery seems to make that situation worse. Furthermore, if you weren't going to do the lottery decision until March, working families would be enrolling in private pre-K or private wraparound programs now. So if you wait till March, it's too late. Kids' lot will be full and out of schools in town. So working families, what are you going to do if you get that half-day spot? If you were forced in a half-day spot for the lottery and you work, then you might have to go to private school, and they might not use the Foundations and Envision Math Program that Center School and some of the other schools use in our district now.
Okay.
Yep. And if a parent was looking to re-enter the workforce, knowing in March might be too late for their job search. So thank you for your time, and I'm going to go home and see my children.
Thanks for coming. Appreciate the fact that you had your succinct comments for us. Appreciate that. Okay, I saw another hand. Okay, your name and your town and your topic.
Hi, my name is Anne Ogilvy, and I am from Lancaster, and my topics are the cuts to the integrated preschool program.
Okay.
And while I'm here tonight representing myself, I also would like to read from the petition that was recently circulated, and now has over 260 signatures from citizens from the towns of Lancaster, Bolton, and Stowe. And Chairwoman Ramasco, with your permission, I would also like to ask if parents who did sign the petition, while they may not be able to speak, if they could raise their hands to say that they have signed the petition.
Well, I'll tell you what. You've got something that you want us to take a look at. I'm assuming that those names are on that petition. I'm assuming that many of them are here tonight, and this is your time to talk to us. So why don't you do what you need to do? Give her the three minutes starting now.
I did.
Yeah, give her the full three now. Okay, Anne?
Thank you.
All right.
And it's bridged.
What's, is it bridged?
It's abridged.
For three minutes? Good job!
We are alarmed by and do not support the recent proposal by the Neshofer Regional School District Administrative Team and subsequent decision by the Neshofer Regional School District School Committee to dramatically reduce the size of the existing preschool program by 44 percent for the 2018-19 school year. This decision resulted in the loss of 75 preschool seats in a district already challenged with limited access to affordable, high-quality preschool options. In light of the lack of a demonstrated case for programmatic or financial urgency for this decision, we respectfully request that the Neshofer Regional School District School Committee and Superintendent Clenchy reaffirm and act upon your stated commitments to both early childhood education and collaboration. We ask the following. Number one, that you suspend any action related to the vote from the Neshofer Regional School District School Committee meeting on Wednesday, November 29th, 2017, related to realigning preschool services and cutting spaces until a comprehensive early childhood education plan for the district has been created and approved by the school committee. And number two, we ask that you appoint, that the superintendent appoint, a committee that includes representation from all stakeholders, parents, administrators, educators, citizens, and Neshofer Regional School District School Committee representatives, to engage in a process to develop a vision and a three-to-five-year strategy for a comprehensive early childhood education plan for the district that includes preschool and kindergarten. This plan should include a needs assessment, public listening sessions, benchmarking from the state of Massachusetts and beyond, financial modeling, and substantial stakeholder engagement. We recognize that change is sometimes necessary and acknowledge that efficiencies in the current structure can no doubt be gained. However, we believe that a stronger model of early childhood education must be developed through collaboration with stakeholders. We can and must do better. We truly believe that first-grade public education is our community's most valuable asset, and we look forward to building a better plan for early childhood education in partnership with you. And as I mentioned, 260 people have signed this as of this morning.
Can you give that to Alita, but before you do, could you write for me the names of the authors of that document?
Yes, I'd like to do that. And the authors have also requested a meeting with Superintendent Clenchy, and she's graciously responded, and I believe we will be arranging a meeting in the near future.
Okay, so Anne, what I need you to do is write the names, hand it to Alita so we can put it into the public record, and then we'll take it. I'll take that under advisement.
Great.
All right? Thank you. Time? Perfect. Thank you very much. Thank you all for that. I really appreciate your comments, your thoughtfulness, and the appropriateness of your comments. We're going to move on to school committee chairs, and I want you to settle in, because I have a couple of minutes I need to speak on a couple of things here. The first thing is, school committee, these are obviously comments to you. Don't forget the January 20th Budget Workshop. I think we're starting at 8:30. Alita's already put the agenda together. It is chock-full, and I'm really hoping that many of the people that have specific issues that they're concerned about in the community come and observe that meeting as well, so they get a perspective of what we're really looking at in totality with the budget and some of the things that we've got to make decisions on this year. Okay. I'm going to read a press release to you folks, because I don't think that the full committee is aware of this. From the Bolton Police Department, the Chief of Police, that was dated December 7th, which was one day after our December 6th school committee meeting. The press release was issued as a direct response to an inquiry from the Bolton and Stowe Independent to learn more about the incident that had occurred during the Citizens' Comments portion of the previous evening's meeting on December 6th. And this is the press release. "The Bolton Police Department was contacted by Town Administrator Donald Low requesting police assistance at the school committee meeting for an individual causing a disturbance. The meeting was put in recess by School Committee Chairperson Lorraine Ramasco while they awaited the police arrival." I apologize for the pronunciation here, because I'm just not sure, and I've asked several people, and nobody's guessed it. "Mr. George Kivrin from Stowe came to the meeting planning to vocally dispute a school matter. At this time, no charges are being put forward. We do not condone this type of behavior and hope in the future that matters like this can be handled in a more calm, reasonable manner." Now, three weeks later from the time of that meeting, there was an article in the Stowe and Bolton Independent, "Pre-K Changes Prompt Concern," that hit Bolton on December 20th, and I think Stowe on December 18th, but it didn't include the details of the press release or the concern expressed by the Bolton Chief of Police. Only the Bolton and Stowe Independent can explain to you why the statement was not released to the public in its entirety and in the print edition where the article identifying the reason for the recess appeared. I have talked with so many residents, Bolton and Stowe mainly, a couple from Lancaster, and some of you are even in this room over the past several weeks. Some of the folks that I talked to indicated that they were confused, because they were either in this room, or they watched the meeting on their cable channel, and then they read the article in the Independent, and it didn't appear that they were referencing the same thing and that it was different. So a lot of the questions I got was, what really happened? I really do want to thank every single community member that I've met with, every single community member that sent me emails. I have to tell you that, with the exception of one or two, but really one, everyone has been concerned and really, really appropriate. We need to hear from you, and you know, the way you teach your kids, the way you talk to us is the way we want to talk to you. So like, we can do this. We can figure this out. And there's a lot of information that flies around at school committee meetings, and a lot of it is regulated, and a lot of it is a historical perspective of things that are in the rearview mirror that you might not even know about, because you haven't had a chance to go back and research that, what went on in the rearview mirror. But to our community, when you have questions and you need facts about anything that's happening at the school committee or at the district level, the place to get that information, the factual information, is on the district website. That's the official voice for everything that we do. That's the thing that all the lawyers reference. That's where all that information is. If there's ever an error on it, we'll correct it, but for the most part, that stuff is vetted before it's even put up there. You can even watch it on our cable channels. Going forward, I'm going to use the chair's update to fact-check any and all inaccuracies. I'm not going to go through every little, because there's too, sometimes there's too many nits, but things that are important, I'm going to fact-check them here, and I really am going to ask that you guys, you community, please, I want you to pay attention to that stuff, because I think some of what has happened in the past is that wrong information gets out there, or half of the information gets out there, and then the void is filled, and it may not be filled with the accurate information, and that doesn't help swirl. Okay, so that said, our support in fact-checking is not going to be limited to the Bolton and Stowe Independent. I don't want it to seem like that's the only outlet. There has been a lot of miscommunication and a lot of misinformation swirling around this district, and as the misinformation becomes visible to the school committee, we're going to reach out to Level Set It, and we're going to turn you back to the website where the official information and the sources will be. You can look at our meeting agendas. You can go into our packets. You can look at our minutes, and I think that the information there is more reliable than invitation-only social media pages or anonymous websites. Okay? So guys, we will give you the information. I think this school committee, over the past couple of years, has been pretty diligent in pushing out so much information that sometimes I think people are like, I don't even know where to start. Ask us where to start. We'll take you, we'll take you on the journey that got us to that point. All right, I'm done. Isabel, it's your turn.
Lucky me.
Save me for myself.
No problem. Okay, so I'll start off with news from the music department. It's pretty exciting. Next week, four of the high school music students will be taking part in the central district music ensembles. These four students, there's two seniors, Mark Dakota and Catherine Smith, junior Renza Morissette, and freshman Vivian Stringfield have auditioned and were accepted to these honorable ensembles. They will rehearse next week at Watchus at High School and perform on Saturday, January 13th, at Mechanics Hall in Worcester. There were over 1,000 students who auditioned for these ensembles, so it's really, truly a great honor if you're selected. Additionally, Mark received the second highest score for a flute in Worcester County. He'll be auditioning for the All-State Concert Band on Saturday, January 20th. From athletics, our athletic director is here tonight, so I'll provide just a quick summary. The winter teams are off to a good start. Only a few teams competed over break, and the middle school basketball teams are also doing fairly well in their seasons. DECA will be competing at the district competition at UMass Lowell next week on January 9th, and so lots of members are looking towards that, and then looking towards state's glutton competition. And that's really all I have for you.
Well, thank you for that. We appreciate hearing about some good stuff. That's goodness. Superintendent's report.
Yeah, it's a short one this time, because it's been, it feels like we just left here. So it's on a long report tonight. Rob Frieswick is here tonight. He's going to talk to you a little bit about the deep cleaning that we did at the high school over the vacation time period. We worked really, really hard to bring in a company that specializes in sanitizing and deep cleaning. We looked at really high-traffic areas, and I know between Rob and Tom, you can kind of fill us in on the key areas that they hit, but we feel really, really good about the amount of work that they did, and Rob, you can fill us in on the details when you get up here. MSBA has opened up their SOI, which is really exciting for us. I had forwarded an email that I'd sent to MSBA today. That's Massachusetts School Building Authority with regards to the fact that the Neshofer Regional District would be wanting to submit an SOI, Statement of Interest, as we look forward for some help and support with the high school. And what our next steps for the high school, as it's aging, we know that, we could go on forever around this table, but some of the concerns we have about that high school right now, so for us to get ready to take that next step is huge. The school committee had struck, for those of you that may be new to some of this, had struck a committee earlier this year. That committee went out. I know Erica, you're here, you sat on that committee. That committee took a look at a lot of the research with Bob Zakansky. They came forward and encouraged the school committee to move ahead with the submission of an SOI. So my job now, now that they just opened that window effective today, is to go ahead and fill out the SOI. I'll bring it back to the school committee within the next month or so, and then they'll decide whether they're going to move forward with it or not. But that window just opened today.
Have you had a chance to look at what the SOI fulfillment requirements are?
Well, one of the things that came out today is that there's some pieces that are going to be added along the way. So some information has come out, but not all of it. So that was one of the reasons why I got that additional email saying, we'll continue to keep you updated here, so.
Because I would like to get that on as quickly as we can.
Nice to jump in. Yeah, I thought you would probably think that way.
Thank you.
You had mentioned the winter concerts. They were awesome, right across the district. I was in a winter concert in every community this last December season, and they were great. The talent of our kids, whether it's the choir, whether it's the band, it was phenomenal. If you get a chance to get out to one of your concerts, you really need to make sure that you go and see that. I had two additional, just for a real quick thing, is the pre-K. I just want to allude to that. I'm so appreciative and so respectful of the number of parents. By our account, there were 60-some parents that were out at the pre-K meeting on December 20th, and it was a cold night, and I know that you've got other things to do other than come and sit in an auditorium and listen to your administrator speak, but I'm very appreciative of the fact that so many of you were there, so I want to thank you so much for that. The other thing you probably, everybody in this room probably already knows, but I want to put it out for our community, just to say that we have closed schools for tomorrow. You probably should have all gotten the text or the phone call or whatnot earlier today. To me, it seemed to be a no-brainer, to be honest with you, for Thursday. It's Friday that we're kind of sitting on. We'll wait and see what happens tomorrow. Hopefully, I can make a decision either tomorrow afternoon or tomorrow evening. I suspect I won't be surprised if we don't have a delayed start Friday morning, but it depends on the strength of that storm. And Rob and I met earlier today, and if they can't, if our DPWs feel that they can't get it cleared up in time, then we won't be able to have school on Friday. So we're just going to have to wait and play this out tomorrow and make a decision tomorrow night. For the school committee purpose, just so that you know, we've met with our DPWs, actually we had that meeting just early December, I think, and brought all of our DPW leads in. You'll recall that we did that last year as well. We took a look at our process last year and said, you know, is there anything that we want to tweak here? Did we nail it out of the park? How did it work for all of us? And everybody unanimously said what we did last year worked perfectly. So we didn't make any changes to our process. For the folks in the room, just to kind of review how the process works. Generally, the superintendents in our area, the local superintendents, all started email chain. I asked for it to start last night, and they did, because we already saw what was coming. Thereafter, you're linking back up with your local superintendents, you're reaching out to your DPWs, your head of facilities, who's Rob Frieswick. All of those players come to the table, and everybody's got different information that they bring, different maps, and we kind of look at all the different maps, and we can see where, and of course, the storm could still, who knows what it could do between tonight and tomorrow. It's the best guess you could possibly make, you know, and that's how you deal with it. I wanted, I knew this morning that we were probably going to close, but I wanted to wait and see. I know that Mayor Walsh had a press conference today, very good, and I watched Governor Baker, his press conference as well. So I felt very comfortable when I knew that I was going to send the message out at 3:00, and I just remember as a parent how important it was for me to get that message the night before, if I could get it. So that's kind of, it's not just Brooke in the back room saying, gee, I wonder if I should go to school or not. There are a lot of people involved in it. So that's it. So hang tight. We'll see tomorrow afternoon what we are going to do about Friday. And that's it for me.
All right. We are going to move into Pat Maroni, our interim business manager. She's going to talk to us about the FY '18 budget review, FY '19 budget update, and then Rob. We're going to move facilities update right after that. Nice little bundle.
Okay. Good evening, and Happy New Year. I just want to bring November's Financial Operations Statement up before you. As you can see, we're moving right along. We're still waiting for the statement that would have the ratification of the contract, so you'll be seeing that in December. So my numbers will look a little bit different. At that point, I'm going to request some transfers in the salary lines, and then everything will look more like it should.
I want to make sure that, Pat lets, before you go on from there, let's just make sure, because you've got a broader audience tonight, so I want to make sure that there's that understanding there. I mean, your school committee is going to understand, but I know the broader audience is going to understand that, so.
So basically, when we go through contract negotiations, we have to take what we anticipate an increase in the salaries is going to be, and we put it someplace in the budget where it's, you know, not as apparent as it normally would be. But it has to be part of our budget, because we need the funds in the upcoming year. So basically, we place it in different places across the budget, and we have to wait for the contract to be ratified. We know the percentage salary increases and everything, and then once we've made those changes, which would be in December, you will then see that the salaries are in alignment and there- the salaries are in alignment, and there look like there's some deficit projected numbers there when in fact they're really not. It's basically, you know, as, as each month goes by, the operations look a little bit different because, because of where the money is, and you'll be seeing some changes, like I said, in December. Does anybody have any questions about that? No? No? Okay, so I have an, I'll move on for an update about the fiscal year 19 budget. I'm going to a meeting on the 11th of January, I should be getting some concrete numbers for the Worcester County time assessment, which is a big piece, you know, close to a million dollars, so I'm waiting for that number to come in. And we're still waiting for the state numbers, they're trickling in, getting a little bit at a time, so most of what I put into the original budget that I brought before you about a month ago, most of the numbers are right on target anyway, based on calculations that I did, but, you know, we still have some numbers that we're waiting for, and I will update that, all of that information as I have it for our 20th meeting.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And I'd like to bring Rob to the table at this point. He will be giving us an update on what's going on across the district in facilities.
And if you can, is Rob Frieswick?
Thanks for having me.
Keep in mind, Rob is, again, for the group, Rob is what, so many weeks on the job?
Six.
Thank you, six weeks on the job. So, I mean, he's really, he's not new to our district, but he is new to this role. And so tonight, he's kind of just providing an update, saying, "Okay, since I kind of got in here, here's where we're at right now." And then, of course, we'll, we'll talk some different things on the 20th when we talk budget, and then you'll come back probably around March or April and give a full-fledged, by that point in time, the snow should be gone, we'll know how much damage was done to our budget, with snow removal and everything else. So this is just kind of a brief overview.
Thank you. Obviously, we just went through some extreme cold temperatures, a little bit of a reprieve today. Jim Brigham, the electrician, HVAC tech, general, you know, all-around inman, has been working around the clock to monitor and fix any heating issues that have been coming up. We've been proactive in keeping the nighttime set points up at night, you know, to avoid any frozen pipes, because it's just, it's bad news, you know, anytime we get anything like that. Fuel consumption's going to be up, obviously, in December because of the cold temps and the nighttime set temps being up at nighttime. You know, after this weekend, it looks like the long, you know, long-range temperature models are going to come up a little bit, so hopefully we can get a little reprieve on the heating systems. We had a couple of snow, you know, snow and ice events under our belts, you know, we had excellent communications with the DPW directors, and, you know, a couple of things we need to iron out with our, you know, internal plow contractors, but overall, I think we did pretty good. Obviously, tomorrow's going to be a big one, so, you know, a pretty big telltale sign. Quick update on the Sawyer boiler project, from, we're converting from oil to propane. Mike McLaughlin from Alanco came in yesterday, they were hoping to switch from the boiler unit that we're currently using right now to the secondary unit in order to make the conversion to propane and put the new boiler unit in, but they found some issues with that secondary boiler, so we kind of put things on hold right now. We don't want to go forward, you know, and have any issues in these cold temperatures and lose the heating system, so.
We've just delayed it.
We've delayed it.
Until this school's now done.
Yeah, we're thinking maybe we'll wait till February vacation when the school's empty, gives us a little more flexibility there, so. Carpet installation at the center school, the bus entrance went in over Thanksgiving weekend.
It looks great.
Yeah, it came out good. Jim Brigham is working with National Grid on a VFD program for the schools in Bolton and Lancaster, variable drive, frequency drives. This program is a no-cost program, ICS contracting is adding VFDs to our heating and cooling units. It will give us significant cost savings once these are all up and running. Under normal operating conditions, like I said, we'll see significant savings. I just got some quick numbers here. For Sawyer School, you know, we could see a one-year savings of $9,000, potentially $9,000, there's a lot of variables that go into that.
This is a result, excuse me, I'm sorry. As a result of converting to?
Putting these VFDs in, because what happened right now is when the system calls for heat or calls for HVAC, it just goes from zero to 100, there's nothing in between, so if you're only running half the building, it'll, you know, it'll
Regulate it.
Regulate it, so it's not running full-tilt all the time.
Thank you.
Emerson, we're looking at, you know, just over $2,500 a year. The high school, right around $10,000. MRE and LBMS, we're looking about $12,000 a year in savings, potential savings, if things, these, these numbers are based on like eight hours runtime and also eight cents per kilowatt hour. So right now, we're locked into that price, so, you know, that's, that's a good hard number. I'm filling out an application with Hudson Light &amp; Power right now, because that's who we buy our power from down there, so National Grid, you know, they're not servicing those schools, so they're not part of this program. Hudson Light &amp; Power does offer incentive programs for VFDs and also LED lighting, so once we go forward with that, there'll be an energy audit, and then we'll see, you know, what we're eligible for. And like Superintendent Clutchy, you know, who was earlier, was the deep cleaning at the high school. We had a company, Resource One, come in over the break to do a thorough cleaning of the athletic areas at the high school. Three locker rooms, bathrooms that are in those, the two gyms, the cage inside the upper gym, the trainers' room, some of the hallways that the student athletes use for stretching out and various other things. The gym cleaning consisted of wiping down the walls, they had locks basically that they would put in a cleaning and disinfecting solution, and they were going up, I would say probably about 12 feet high in wiping from that point down to the floor. All the, all the walls were wiped down, all the protective padding, bleachers, chairs, and the floors were also disinfected and cleaned with the solution.
So, so I'm going to interrupt you again, sorry, that's something that I've heard from several people, so thank you for jumping on that. When was the last time the gym and the locker rooms, because the locker rooms, especially the boys' locker room, has been a concern for many, many years? When was the last time it was done?
I mean, it's always, it's cleaned every day.
No regular clean, but was she talking about the deep cleaning?
Oh, regular cleaning?
No, we're talking the deep cleaning, like this kind of thing.
I want to know about the deep cleaning.
Sitting here six weeks, I'm not sure. I, I know that it's, they have disinfecting solutions.
You can be honest and tell me it hasn't been done in 10 years, if it hasn't been done in 10 years.
If I had the information, I would give it to you, but I don't have that information.
The bottom line is, we don't have any evidence that it has been done in probably at least a decade.
Okay.
So we've got no records that show that it has been done.
So now that it's been done, are we going to get on our rotating schedule?
Yeah, we're kind of shifting our mindset on how we clean, and there's other products and other pieces of equipment that we're going to put into use on a more regular basis. There's, let me just go back to other things that were done during this cleaning. In the locker rooms, all the lockers were cleaned out before students went home, and the lockers were cleaned inside, out, all around, floors, showers, bathroom areas. All sporting equipment was fogged with a fogger with the disinfectant, basketballs, volleyballs, anything that were inside the closets in the lower gym.
You psyched?
Oh, yeah. I watched the whole thing.
We're adding more hand sanitizing stations around the high school. Jason, the head custodian, has put a bunch up, we're waiting for the rest of them to come in, once they come in, we'll have those installed. We're adding signage to the bathrooms, you know, explaining the importance of proper hand washing, and we're adding sanitizing wipes inside the cage area where they do a lot of the workouts, so that way the athletes, coaches, any staff members, they can wipe down the equipment after they're done using it.
Right.
Going forward, you know, we like to take this approach into all locker room and gym areas at the middle schools, you know, and all the other schools, to make sure that everything is, you know, good across the district. We have a fogging machine that we're going to put into rotation probably once a week inside these high-traffic areas where, you know, basketballs and the volleyballs are stored, the weight cage, and you just go through and you just, you put the solution over and it just disinfects, you know, anything that the fly comes in touch with, so, you know, hopefully, any issues, you know.
Do we always have that, or is that something?
No, they've had it for maybe a couple of years or so. They've used it.
Top five years.
They've had it that long?
Yeah.
I know they use it, you know, if there's a flu outbreak or something like that, they'll go through in a classroom and they'll, you know, they'll just hit the whole classroom, so we figured a really good idea to put it in rotation at the high school.
That's a great idea.
Hit all those other areas, in the gyms and the locker rooms, so.
Thank you. This is a huge step forward for us. Like, I'm really, really pleased that we did this, and I'm really pleased about taking it to the next step now and going after the middle schools and those areas and whatnot, so. I think you both did a great job on this, thank you. I know that you met with a lot of different people and before you decided who you wanted to work with and such, and I'm really excited about moving forward with this, so thanks for doing that.
I have a question. Look, you said that there's no record, so we have records?
Oh, my God, no, there, no, as I was saying.
I don't mean you found some, I was just, I was going to say.
No, no, we didn't find any.
I thought you found some.
No, we did not find any records.
We will going forward, though.
But you know what, Rob, I thank you for saying that, because you're, you're new to this, and you see that we have now got records, right? And that's
File cabinet full in the downstairs.
File cabinets with, with stuff in it, and it's just, yeah, I'm really proud of the work that we've done in these areas to rebuild files.
Thank you. Thanks. Does anybody else have questions for Rob?
I just wanted to add one other thing too. Whitewater will be here at the next meeting to go over a capital, the capital item that we have proposed in the budget for
The high school.
The upgrade, the updating of the wastewater at the high school.
Day from out of the engineering, the engineer that's working on that's going to be here as well, so.
And this is the This is a $150,000-plus project that we're looking at, that we have to do. We are out of compliance, and we're on the EPA naughty list, no one else to say, we are out of compliance, we have to do something here.
Simple first in line, that we have to be compliant.
So does the rest of the school committee understand what that out of compliance is a result of, because I think it's important for you guys to understand, it's, it's not that things weren't taken care of, it's that there was some new regulation from what I remember that was implemented, and because of that new regulation, our existing wastewater treatment facility, whatever you call it, they, they reduced the number, I'm going, let me, let me give it a shot, because I've got to get this stuff straight. This is what I do at night, right, when I'm alone. The, the, the distance from our treatment facility to surrounding wells was in compliance, and then the regulations changed and it shrunk those regulations, and there was no grandfathering.
Right.
We don't have that option to say, "But we were here first."
Right.
So that's why we have to take care of this. Just want to make sure everybody understood that. Okay. Are we good?
We're good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to jump into new business. Why don't we do the, the endowment, let's do the endowment fund and the Luther Burbank acceptance first, and then we'll jump back up soon.
So we'll need Pat for that.
So I have a letter here from the Endowment Fund, and basically what the Endowment Fund is, is a, a fund, is of several members from the community. I have the letter, the letter is posted on the website, but basically what they do is they look at the additional needs of the high school in particular, and teachers are encouraged to put in requests for any additional need that they may have, and then the Endowment Fund makes a decision as to whether or not they are going to fund this particular request. And they have approved $1,989.90, and what's made up of this particular amount is, there's some science in wellness, world language, supplies, one of them, there's a game, supplies to start a cooking club, German immersion supplies, some additional headphones, and some cookboards. So I'm pleased to say that they have, that these funds are available to us again for the high school, so I need you to accept this.
So I need a motion. Mark, you want to?
Thanks.
You're welcome.
I move that we accept the proposed grants from the Neshoba Endowment Fund for the purposes described in their letter of memorandum in our agenda for the amount of $1,989.90.
Thank you, in a second.
I'll second.
Thank you very much. The, all those in favor? It's unanimous, and I think it's only fair, because this endowment fund, does this kind of work for the school every single year to recognize the people that are on the endowment fund? Paula Kastner, Audrey McLean, Amy Ferris, Rita French, Karen Fox, Audrey Gamon, Raksha Patel, Valerie Parent, and Sarah Wedner. Thank you all very, very much. Okay? And the Luther Burbank Washington DC donation.
Right. I have a letter here from the principal, Laura Friend, at the Luther Burbank Middle School, and she is asking us to accept a donation, a gift donation on behalf of the Luther Burbank Middle School, in the amount of $4,500, and this is to defray the cost of the eighth-grade Washington DC trip, which will occur May 29th through June 1st, 2018. Specifically, this gift is intended to pay for the cost of the trip for five students and their families who have requested financial assistance for the trip. The gift was generously offered by a parent benefactor who wishes to remain anonymous. So, I have a motion.
Mark, would you please?
I move that the school committee accept on behalf of the district the proposed gift of $4,500 for Luther Burbank Middle School travel to Washington DC.
In a second.
Second.
Steve, all's in favor? It's unanimous, and I think we all need to do a very loud thank you to whoever this parent benefactor is for that incredible, generous, thoughtful gift. Okay. Next is the kindergarten program update, so I'm going to turn it over to the superintendent.
Sure. Thank you. And I'm going to ask our elementary principals to come forward. Cindy Maxfield is here, she'll join us, and Joan DeAngelis is back there, and she will join the table as well.
Take your chair.
Sure.
I'll just take this up there.
Sure.
Okay, sure.
Yes.
I should come in so that you can hear.
There is space.
She's there.
She's in the row.
Okay, wonderful. Okay, thanks so much. So I'm going to actually over to the principals, I know that we've got a PowerPoint here, Alita's probably bringing it up as I speak. I, I think we, we came forward to the school committee last year, and we had requested that we make a couple of different changes, we wanted to see how those changes to the program went this year, and so far, I think it would be safe to say we are feeling very comfortable right now with where things are at. You'll also recall that this was the group that we decided that we would add some additional talent to the team this year, and when we saw the numbers come in, that's one of the strengths of having that wiggle room to add more staff if we need to or not, and in this case, we sat down and said, even though the budget had already passed at that point in time, we looked at it, we said, you know what, this, this would be so much better if we could add some additional staff to the roster, and so we did that, and, and it worked out really, really well in each of our communities. So I'm going to have the principals speak to all of that, and then we'll also speak to, as we're moving forward, what our thinking is. So just again, I know that the community probably knows everyone, but let me just have them raise their hands, so. The far side there is Cynthia Maxfield, she's our early education coordinator. Sean O'Shea is your principal in Lancaster. Ross McCarren is your principal at Stowe at Center, and Joel Bates is your principal here at Florence Sawyer and Emerson. And Joan DeAngelis is sitting back in the back. Joan is our Director of Pupil and Personnel Services, and she also helps to oversee, well, pretty much oversees completely all of our sped programming and requirements, and keeps us in line with regards to statutes and regulations that we need to be abiding by, and everything, whether it's pre-K, K, special education, K to 12, she is our go-to person for that. So with all of that said, then, gentlemen, I'll turn it over to you folks to start, and Ross, I think you're going to tee this up.
Yes, so thank you, Happy New Year, everyone. Just real quick, the discussion points are up on the screen, but you have them as part of your packet as of, well, the Friday before, I think, the, the last meeting, because it's
requirements and keeps us in line with regards to statutes and regulations that we need to be abiding by. And everything, whether it's pre-K, K, special education, K to 12, she is our go-to person for that. So with all of that said then, gentlemen, I'll turn it over to you folks to start. And Ross, I think you're gonna tee this up.
Yes. So thank you. Happy New Year, everyone. Just real quick, the discussion points are up on the screen, but you have them as part of your packet as of, well, the Friday before, I think, the last meeting because it's just postponed. So historical enrollment data will be reviewed by Cynthia. Joel's gonna talk a little bit about data from our current application and Sean will talk about the proposed recommendations and then I'll wrap it up with proposed timeline. And we feel like if there's questions at the end of each slide, please ask them or we can answer questions at the end from the school committee.
It might make better sense to go through everything and say the questions from the school committee.
Yep, and we can go back to the slides.
Yeah.
Okay, so here we have the kindergarten enrollment data from the past three years and I think the numbers speak for themselves. These are what our numbers were the past three years at all three schools in half day or full day. The hybrid model was started in 1415 actually, so we had the hybrid model for three years. This year, we went to the designated half-day classroom, designated full-day classrooms, and those were our numbers.
So thank you, Cindy. So the current numbers are, you've had them for a couple of weeks. They've changed a little bit and I'll ask my colleagues to sort of give you an update on some of those. And I think even now on January 3rd, there's a lot that's still in flux that, you know, for example, at Florence Sawyer, there are 64 students that we're looking at. We have more than the nine half-day. We still have not heard from 17 of those families in terms of what they're looking at for full or half-day. So those numbers are not quite, they're not quite solid yet.
So I can speak for Center. We are much closer to what our census number was. Some of the families that came off the census, either they moved or they won't be attending Center School for various reasons, whether it's private school, homeschool. Other families have come on that they've moved in or just weren't part of the census to begin with for whatever reason. They were overlooked. So currently, we are at 69 families responding regarding their students. So that's a total, right now, we have a total of 60 full-day requests and nine half-day requests. So and they're still coming in and even during, we met this afternoon just to go over some numbers real quick and just in preparation for this evening. And as I was in the meeting, Mary O'Brien sent me an email from our office to say another full-day request to come in. So they're still coming in, but we're getting closer to what our census number is.
Yeah, so we're slow starters. We strong, we have a strong... So there were 52 on the census. We know that two students moved, or two students moved in, so 52 have gone out. We currently have 26 students committed to the full day and seven to the half-day, so we're still waiting on 17 responses. Keep in mind though, MRE adds on average about 40 students a year over the last three years. So last year, we started at about 50 and we ended at, or we started at 58 and we ended at 71. So Mrs. Carrigan is gonna be making a lot of phone calls and has been making a lot of phone calls to track down those other 17 and get more information. So there's still information to be had over the next couple
weeks. And that's true for all of us, that, you know, where we have outliers and we don't have preferences yet, those calls will be the sort of the next phase of that. Those calls will be made to homes to say, where do we stand? Are you coming? What is, you know, what is your choice looking like?
And I want to point out, we went through this exact same thing last year too. And I remember saying to the school committee even last year, these numbers are in flux and they really do tend to fluctuate quite a bit between now and actually till school starts, to be honest with you.
Can you, can you tell me again, Joel, I'm sorry, what your current, and I know we're beginning of January and we've got nine more months to go, but can you tell me what your full and half-day is right now?
I can't tell you what the...
Well...
So half-day is 11 right now. Full-day, I think we're up to 30, but that means that there's, you know, that number minus the...
Is that concurrent?
No.
Oh.
Do you mean our projected ones?
Are you talking projected for next year or right now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So those numbers.
Oh, there they are.
Yeah. And so those, this is based on the data of 1214 that, you know, as Ross said, I think our census data is closer to where it was and what we expect. It's around 64 right now, but we don't have preferences from 17 of our families.
All right. And so you've got 11 half-day and then, what'd you say, 30? About roughly 30 full?
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I needed. Thank you.
And Sean, just to review, you've got seven and a half-day right now, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. What do you guys, I'm sorry, I know I'm supposed to wave, but I can't. I have to introduce you. So when you folks, like typically at this point in the school year, and I know we have people move in during the summer and move out during the summer and I know that's a big, busy, squishy time, but generally, when do things start to feel like a little more solid?
Mark, the beginning of March is our typical hard registration date.
Okay.
Where the parents are coming in, we're getting all the hard paperwork and that's usually where we get the solid amount of what's gonna happen.
So we have two months to see that, like nine and a...
Yeah, I mean, I think that's fair based on what I've seen at Center the last two years. I think the fluctuations that come in and out afterwards, while they're not in the exact net zero, I think they're not as impactful as it is up until that date. So...
Okay, so we're gonna see a lot more activity.
Yeah.
Well, I think you're planning on reporting to the school committee again on the 20th, on the 20th.
January 20th, yeah. So our budget projections will reflect where we think we're going to be.
Oh, good.
We're gonna try and get that as accurate as possible.
Awesome. That's helpful. Thanks. Lynn?
I was just wondering, I mean, do you guys still assess the kindergarteners or, because that gives you a more, a higher number because the parents actually come in and get assessed and do you guys...
So do the screening in the fall once the kids start attending, yeah. But once, I mean, by the time we're through that registration process, I mean, I think we have a pretty hard number about where we're at. Yeah, I don't know. Fluctuation comes in and out, at least from my experience at Center.
And how do you, I mean, I've heard, but how do you feel about this current model versus the...
What you should ask.
Well, okay. Sorry?
So our recommendations based on all those numbers, last year, we looked at this and we continue to recommend going with the program that we have, having the full-day option and a half-day option for parents who would choose that, the non-hybrid model. As we were just talking and there's a timeline on the next slide, to monitor the enrollment, to see how the impacts of those enrollments, if they jump up or down, and make some, give you and us some real clear dates so we can make some good decisions on that. And then lastly, our recommendation is not to change anything with the tuition at this moment.
So the tuition that was this year's tuition, you want to maintain that for next year?
That's our recommendation.
Okay, we can, we can talk about all this after they finish. Okay. All right. Thank you.
So just lastly, our timeline, obviously, we're gonna continue to collaborate with broken other central office staff regarding enrollment and what things are looking like up until that January 20th workshop. So at that time, we talked about numbers of sections for grade levels. You know, kindergarten is obviously part of that discussion and we'll let the school committee know what we're looking for for sections for the following school year relative to what we have in for enrollment data for kindergarten at that time. So and just like we said, that March deadline, that March timeline, we want to make sure that we update any enrollment before then, that if we're making any changes to our recommendations, we do so around that time and not any later so that we can update incoming K families about what's happening. And then going into April, May, May and June, that allows us to stay on our timeline for communication, parent nights, student visits, things like that.
So what would, what would change though? I mean...
So I think we feel comfortable knowing what our numbers are gonna look like once we have most of our applications back on January 20th. But if things come in with an influx or change, or parents make requests to go from half-day to full-day or full-day to half-day, I think we need to be mindful that that may still happen, but we want to make sure that we're dealt with it and we're done by March of this year and not wait any longer to make any changes to recommendations by that point.
Yeah.
But that doesn't mean that they're not gonna do it. I mean, do you want to tell parents that that's it or do you want to...
No, I don't think that that's what we're saying at all, Lynn. I don't think that we're, I think we're just saying, we have to, at some point in time, we have to kind of say, what's the cutoff? How many kids, how many classes are we gonna run? What is this gonna look like? And we don't want to wait as long as we did last year. We want to say, look, we need to know by March for hiring purposes or whatever it is that we're doing, right?
Right.
And so that's all we're saying. We're not saying it's an absolute cutoff and that's not all what we're looking at. No.
Okay.
Okay. I think too, one of the concerns that we have, I want to put out one or two thoughts on this too, is just the half-days. Like if we continue to only have, like, let's say we've got seven kids in there right now, but two withdraw and we're left with five, then that's gonna leave us in a different situation. So we may have to approach the school committee at that January 20th meeting and say, this is what we're seeing right now. We've got concerns about this. So because then what do you do? Do you run a class with five kids in it or not, you know? So we just want to leave that door kind of open that's out there.
So if that were to happen, then we would want you to come to us with a couple of suggestions.
With your recommendations. And we've talked, we've talked about that too. But I think right now, we decided that let's just wait and see what the numbers are first because otherwise, you're so like, what if, what if, what if? It doesn't make any sense. So we'll just wait and see what the numbers are, be thoughtful and then come to you on the 20th and say, here's what we're thinking.
Right. And I think the enrollment game is not any different than it is for any of our grade levels. As we watch grade levels come up or grade levels go down and whether or not we need to have a discussion with central office with regard to the number of sections we have at that grade level. I think that's something that we continually watch, which is different with kindergarten, is that we need to make sure that we're identifying this to make sure that we're on a timeline to notify families, this is what we're doing. This is the model we're running with.
So you're not, we don't even want to play what if scenario now.
No, it's way too early too.
I think it's all a bit premature.
Yeah.
No, what ifs. Sorry.
No, not right now. Well, it wouldn't make any sense.
Right. You don't have the numbers yet. I get it.
The only other thing that I would, I would put forward, and we've had lots of discussion on this and we're not prepared to come to you with any type of recommendation right now, is the notion of a free full-day K. And what does that look like? What does that cost? You know, and I want to be cautious when we talk about this because I think, you know, as we even talked more about it again today, and these discussions have, by the way, been ongoing for us since last year. This is not something, gee, we just started talking about today. These discussions have been ongoing. And I think, you know, there's going to, at some point in time, we're gonna have to look because I think that people think free full-day and that word free is out there and they don't realize that there's another piece behind it, that it's, it's actually not free. And we, we as a school district or as the three communities are gonna have to decide, are you going to want to pull me up the money that it's going to take to offer free full-day K? And we've talked to a number of superintendents. A couple of us have been on different phone calls in the room and we put them on speakerphone and we all huddle around the phone and so we can ask a lot of really intense questions. And one of the things, of course, that continues to come up and it goes back to referencing things like that $60,000 grant that went away last year, is what happens when that happens? Because how is this sustainable? And, you know, when you talk to the superintendents, that's, because nobody wants to offer it and then have to pull it back. And it's not, it is not fed fully by our state government and I don't think that there's an understanding of that or how the foundation budget works. And so those are all mitigating factors in this. It's a very complex piece. There are some communities that are looking at the potential of phasing it in or ramping it and we've had that discussion too. I know that we've brought up before that we've also looked at the Concord model and said, is that something we want to take a look at? You know, but we continue to say we want to be thoughtful and we want, we want to understand where is that money going to come from? Because we've had that discussion as well. Where will the cuts come across the district that will have to be made to fund that program? Because that's the only way we would be able to run it. So we've had all kinds of discussions. It's not grant money that you apply for and get. That's not at all how it works. It works just the same way as our October 1st student count works. And so it's not something that's just out there that you just make application for and it just bundles in. That's not at all how it works. So we want to take our time with this and be thoughtful and the school committee at some point in time, we're gonna have to have some really rich discussion on, no, do you want us to really pursue this or not? I'm not sure where we, where you stand on it, where we stand on it. So I just want to put it out there. It's not that we, we're not doing work on it. We're doing a lot of work behind the scenes on it, but it's, it's a fair chunk of money and we're gonna have to have some really hard discussion on it.
So when, when, when that discussion comes forward to the school committee with your recommendation, I would want to hear from the principals, what, you're the, you own your community, right? What are you hearing in your community? I know that we've heard from a small, recent respectable group of people who are very passionate about it, but I want to know what you're hearing from other people in your schools.
I mean, I would say on one hand, when we discussed this at some time in the past and it continues to come up, there's a rich handful or two of people who value half-day kindergarten and are very passionate and argue for it. And I came from a district where they had full-day for like eight or nine years. I knew nothing different until I came here. And so to hear another side and why people were very passionate about it, I really respected that and, and one of the reasons we moved to this model. So and there, there continues to be that. And there is, you know, compelling argument for some children to be in school all day at that age too.
Yeah, you know, as a principal, I understand the argument and I understand the point for our community as, as a parent. You know, my, my son was born at the end of May. We would have loved to have had the option of half-day and it wasn't an option for us. And I think he's, you know, he's, he's done. Well, anyone that knows my son knows that. But, but I think that, you know, if we get survey data, we get anecdotal data, we have conversations and, and I think this is, and thank you for bringing up the studies, whoever made the comment, that, you know, there is an aspect, I think, to this particular school district where we want to be responsive to what our community wants as well. And I think, you know, when we look at the model that we advocated to move toward this year and that we're advocating to continue, it was supported not just by our parents, but also our teacher, our kindergarten teachers and the kindergarten aides and, and for reasons that, you know, are not just about logistics, that they are about the sense of community that kids have in a half-day classroom that they don't necessarily get or where parents don't feel that they necessarily get in, you know, leaving during the day. And that was a strong motivator for us. And so, you know, I think as we continue to get more information about what those numbers are gonna look like, you know, we'll continue to do what we do and we talk all the time, you know, to be as calibrated as we can in terms of a recommendation to the superintendent, to you, to act on in terms of your support and advocacy for that programming. And that's, those are, those are curriculum and instruction and programming issues that are not necessarily, you know, that are separate from the financial discussions. And, you know, this is a model that we've wanted to move back toward for a while and it's a model that I think, you know, we're continuing to see successful.
Great. Ross, did you anything?
I mean, I would obviously support what was just said. I think also too, looking at feedback from parents now that their children are in first, second, third, fourth, fifth, whatever it may be, grade to say, you know, what was your experience with half-day versus full-day? You know, would you do the same thing again? That type of thing. If we're looking at making a decision about, you know, not having a half-day option, I'd want to know what, now that families are in the mix of upper elementary, middle school even, what are their feelings about having it done half-day versus full-day? I'd want to have some of that information as well.
And I would say that on my office, I get mixed, mixed reaction. I mean, I certainly, I think, Sean, you alluded to, you know, people that feel very passionate of a free full-day K experience, but then there's also others that feel very passionately against it. And so our job is to try to juggle it all. Now Cindy, I don't know if there's anything else that you'd like to add or not.
No, in the same way with the two models, the hybrid as opposed to the single half-day, that you have mixed reviews on that too. That's what I have found. But it's working right now, so.
Yeah, I feel like I, I'm more comfortable with this. Yeah, I feel like, I'm more comfortable with this than that. I don't, I didn't, I'm sorry.
Yeah, well.
And I'm not an educator, right? So, what do I know? I'm a parent.
And, you know, I have the same pros and cons. There are pros and cons. And what we have now is working, and I think, I don't think we have anyone opposed to it. I don't think any of the parents are opposed to it in either of the sections they might be in. So, why fix something that's not broken?
That's it.
So, I'm going to ask, I'm going to open this up, because I know the school committee has some comments, questions on this. Why don't we, Steve, if you have something you'd like to share?
Well, I did mention to you prior to the meeting.
That's why I asked.
That I think we should be working our way through that. But there are some things I need to know first. For example, what does it cost us? And is it revenue neutral as it exists now? And we're losing money as it is now. What would free K cost us? And how would we pay for it? And would the towns be willing to accept that as part of our budget? Or will we find resistance in the towns? And all credit to all the parents in here who have made their comments known to both us on the school committee and to Brooke over the last month at least. They're not the full town. And we have to be cognizant of the other issues that all three of the towns have from a financial point of view. And that's, I mean, from an educational point of view, I have no problem with that. We should be doing it. From a financial point of view, it becomes another issue. And how we do it, and if we do it in a step method or a graduated method, I think Littleton is one of the towns that's doing it over a five-year period. We have to see how that is. Because all of these, the parents who are now, have kids going into this, into the K program, if we do this on a step basis, they'll be out of that, out of the K issue very quickly, and then be looking at other funding demands for the schools as the kids go through them, which is just as valid.
So, one of the things that I want to know before we even talk about the dollars is, and I've heard, and I've done my own research, and I get it, and I forget, who was the parent? She left. She left. It's from Stowe, right?
Yeah.
Who talked about Philadelphia. Like, to me, I think studies are great, but you've got to compare the demographic to the demographic. So, and I will take a look at that study, because Philadelphia demographic is very different. There are low income in the Philadelphia city, right? The city of Philadelphia than there is here. So, I could, and what I've seen is that that really benefits a demographic that doesn't reflect our. Does that mean it's not going to work for us? No, I'm not saying that. But I want to see data from you guys that says, "Yes, this is not because everybody's doing it. We should do it because everybody's doing it." Because what I'm hearing, and what I've heard from you, Brooke, is that some of these districts are like, "We don't know how we're going to do this. Now we're in it, we don't know what we're going to do and what we're going to cut." I don't want to look at the dollars until I understand the fit for our communities. That's really what I want to understand. Kathy, Lynn, Elise, Susan, Mark, any other? Susan, Kathy, sorry. Whatever your name is.
No, I think that it's, working toward full day K, I think, is something that we need to be talking about. I agree about the funding. There are some funding challenges this year. And I think that they exacerbated perhaps by changes to the way we pay taxes or so. And what the towns, she made the point about the towns, I agree with that. But I think that when you start to look at things programmatically, you look at what has value, you do the same thing with K-12. So, this is no exception to that. There are a lot of models of full day K. Not, as you mentioned, Concord. Concord has three full days, two half-days. One of the half-days, the teachers use for their prep time and working together. The other half-day, they create groups of kids to bring in for enrichment, or if kids need extra help with reading, numeracy, anything like that. And that was a battle to get it to that model. The other thing that I observed and that we might anticipate is, whatever we decide, there are going to be kids who don't want to do it that way. I, you know, I don't want my kid to go full day. I think we have to anticipate that. The other thing is that while schools are required to offer kindergarten, kindergarten attendance is not compulsory. You don't have to go with kindergarten. So, I think that there are a lot of things that we need to understand about it. But it's, I think it's a worthwhile pursuit to look at it programmatically. But we have to look at the juggling act that we have to do with our budget and see what the realities are about what it's going to mean for people's taxes, given all the changes that are coming forward. So, it's not an easy thing, but it doesn't mean we don't do it just because it's that.
Anything else? Anyone?
There's a ton of ways to look at all this information. I mean, there's a lot of studies, there's a lot of angles, and there's a lot of work in. You have your work cut out.
Yes, she does.
Are we directing her?
Are we directing her? No, she's going to come forward with a recommendation. You're not the educator. Neither am I. And I don't want that responsibility. I just want to assess. Sure. All right. So, if your recommendation is to leave it as is for the FY '19 school year, and then on the 20th, you're going to come back and give us an update? And then the tuition rates at that point? Tuition rates have been put out there. And your recommendation was to keep the tuition rates. Did I hear that?
What did they recommend?
Yeah, 72, I got it. All right.
So, their recommendation is to keep it the way it is and keep the tuition rate as.
For the FY '19.
But that might change in March.
My God, if you guys want to, I shouldn't have said that, but if you guys want to touch that tuition rate, you better do it soon.
Well, no, I'm just asking, because.
No, we weren't recommending looking at tuition.
They don't want to touch.
No, what we were talking about is looking at the numbers.
You recommend, tonight, you're recommending that it stay the same, and the tuition stay the same. The class model and the tuition. But things could change on, in March.
Just in numbers. In terms of the numbers.
It just would be sessions.
Just what we might be looking at.
Just on numbers only.
Yeah, that's all.
Beyond tonight, we're not going to make any recommendations.
Just population, just population.
Yeah. I just feel the need to say that I'm not, after asking any recommendations until we have the whole project big picture.
Right.
We have some information that's going to be presented about user fees. There are other things. We also got the message last month that there's $800,000 that we used to get that we're not going to get anymore. I think there's a lot of looking at things.
Oh, we're not, we're not.
I just want to make sure that.
We're not.
For me.
No, and I think we've talked about, what is this? What's this, the article she sent? Oh. Oh.
That's all that is.
Okay. So, we shouldn't be reading that right now. We should be focusing on what we're doing here. I think a couple of months ago, the purpose of all these folks coming forward, and all of Brooke's functional areas coming forward, in addition to the principals, was for us to get an overview of what's happening in those areas, not to make any decisions. Because we can't make any decisions without looking at.
The big picture.
Right.
The whole thing.
Right.
All right.
Yeah. No, no. Okay. Anything else? Thank you. Thank you all for your review.
Thank you.
For your reviews.
Thank you.
Sorry. All right. Old business. Athletic fees.
Athletic fees.
Okay. Tanya, seriously? I was blown away. So, I have no life. I sold my Patriots tickets.
Get out.
For the January 1st game. And I looked at the packet while I was sitting in my warm living room, and I'm like, "Oh, my gosh, look at how much stuff Tanya did." So, I texted her, and she was at the game.
Freezing.
Freezing, yeah.
It was good.
Freezing, you foolish girl.
I wish that's very warm. Lots of layers.
Yes. So, why don't we turn it over to you and hear, let's hear what you have to say.
So, you'll recall that Tanya came a couple of months ago, what, two months ago, to talk about athletic user fees. That was one of the areas that you had asked us to take it and look at. Amongst other programs you'd asked us to look at, athletic user fees was also one of those. And so, you had a couple of questions, and you kind of sent her on her way to do some research for you and bring that information back. Tonight, she's here bringing that information back. So, why don't you take it from there, Tanya?
Okay. So, guys, I took what you asked for at the last meeting, and I kind of added to the large spreadsheet. Included, you know, I worked off FY '17 numbers, so I went back. Again, a lot of these are approximate numbers. I didn't go, you know, to the cents of every little thing. But I did round up, so they were, you know, easier numbers to work with. And I also added some information on gate receipts collectives. I thought that was kind of an important thing to see, on what sports and what different games bring in money for us.
Yeah.
To kind of add into the large spreadsheet. Then, on top of the user fee data, I added some other schools, just other area high schools, and what their user fees are, and any additional fees and family caps that they have.
So, one of the things that you had proposed last time you were with us was a $900 family cap.
Yep.
And there were a couple of other things. So, we're not going to do any voting on this. I just want you guys to remember, well, I want you to remember, when you come before us on the 20th, to remind us. So, anything that your folks have come to us with, that they need a vote on or a decision on, to remind us on the 20th, okay? Because I, right now, we're just trying to drink from the fire hose. But I'm digging the data. Like, I don't think we've ever had this much.
Such data, yeah.
And such rich data. So, whatever it took you, and however much time, I appreciate it. And please thank the principals. Their presentation was exactly what we want. Like, short, succinct, yeah. Not a lot of blah. Okay. So, Tanya, is there anything you want to point out to us? Or can I entertain questions from the group?
You can ask questions.
Mark, I'm sure you have a question or two. I've worked with you for three years, come on. If you don't, we'll move on.
I don't have immediate questions. I think it's great that you've compiled all of this. It's very helpful to get some perspective from individually of the sports, as well as the activities of the sports as well. I really appreciate it. I'm sure it was no small effort to dig up some of this and put it into one comprehensive page. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Karen. Again, thank you. Very comprehensive. Thank God for spreadsheets, huh?
Love them.
The other thing you did, which I really appreciate, is the 10-year compilation of what the district has put in the, and I'm assuming that this is what it is from the general fund, the athletic line item.
Yes. Pat did that report first. I can't take credit for that.
I'll give you credit anyway. But so, according to this, we put, we have put, last year, or for FY '16 and '17, about $600,000 from the general fund has gone towards athletics. And that does not include, or is not offset by, any of the user fees or anything, or is it?
Actually, if you look at the bottom part under the 600, those are the expenditures by the revolving funds.
Okay.
See the bottom part?
Yes.
So, we look at that athletic budget as a whole.
I see. So, the $252,000.
Right.
Are things that we take in or we pay out.
Right.
Which one?
Well, that's the money that we spent out of the revolving funds.
Oh, okay, I see.
It was a real vote.
Right. But what we put into our budget that comes out of the way we put our budget together, that's the $600,000.
$600,000.
Okay. All right. And then this is other monies that we take in that we expend.
Some user fees.
So, our total expenditure is about $864,000. But about $600,000 of that is from the general fund.
The general fund, that's correct.
And, yeah. And so, we get a good sense of how that has grown over the years from this.
Some of the revolving accounts, Mark, you got to help me with this. There were big balances in some of those accounts. What's going on? Is any of those big balances in any of these athletic accounts? And if so, what's the plan to spend them down? Mark, you.
I have a sort of perspective comment. That one unconcluded conversation is, there's a wish on some committee members' hearts to possibly create a stabilization fund to deal with the bond on the athletic field. And if and when we get, come to a decision that yea or nay on having one, it could well be that a significant amount of money in one of those revolving funds might go promptly into stabilization.
Can we shift that money from, yes, it's user fees on your vote?
Yeah.
So, we haven't really had that conversation, but the finance committee has been mentioned, and it requires some large commitment to come to the towns and say, "We'd like to have a stabilization fund." And we are not, we haven't even started that conversation as a whole committee.
And that's just for the field?
For dealing with the bond for the athletic field. And perhaps to put aside money so that when the artificial turf on that field.
Needs to be replaced.
Needs to be replaced. It's not a new bond that necessarily has to go to the towns, but we may be able to fund it because we've been accumulating fees over the years.
So.
So, that's the reason why there is at least one fund that has a significant balance.
So, that's something we should be talking about during this budget cycle. Because to me, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, it's kind of similar to that if we have an overage in the health care line item, which, well, we did three years ago. That's how we started the OPEB. Why wouldn't we shuttle that over to OPEB, to a trust or whatever? Because, I don't want to say it's found money. You can put it towards good, because you're just going to offset an additional expense at some point. I think that's what, similar.
It's certainly a conversation to come to agreement on, yeah.
Yeah, because I don't think it was, I don't think it's a good idea to have money sitting in accounts when we're scraping, looking for what we can, where we can.
Well, maybe sitting, but we also know we have future expenses forthcoming, and it's.
Right, but I'm saying, use that. Put earmark that for what it should, you know, something useful, rather than just sitting there.
Right. Correct. Any future school committee can say, "We want it all."
Right.
Because there's no particular policy on that money at this point.
I don't know if we want to get into the weeds about this, but what comes to my mind when I see user fee for many of the schools is that parents paid into that with the expectation that that money would offset the cost of their child participation.
Right.
So, any money that's left in those accounts is parent money, and should be going for the kids.
Well, that's why I asked, can we really do that? Because I thought that that was.
I think we have to have a conversation about it. I get some, well, my concern, I think I just expressed it. But also, perhaps some ideas on how to perhaps make it to serve the purpose for which it was originally intended.
Yep. We can talk about that.
Okay.
We have to talk about that, because I think it's, the way it is now, it doesn't make any sense. Okay, good. Well, at least we're in agreement on that. Any other questions, comments? I want to force Susan and Elise to say something at some point tonight.
No comment.
She stole it.
Do you have anything else you want to point us to? I did notice the, this might not be PC, but it's the times we're living in. I did notice the salary line item for the athletic director, and I'm glad to see that this school district did the right thing. That was big. And if anybody wants to know what I'm talking about, you can look at the spreadsheet. Bring it up. Okay, anything else? Thank you for all of that work, Pat and Tanya. We really appreciate it.
Is there anything else that you'd like?
Don't you ask. Neil's not here, so I don't know the answer.
You did great with that.
I think we're, I think we're in a good place.
Okay.
I really do.
If anything was up for the twenties, just let me know.
No, and the great thing for the school district, or the school committee is that you now have your formats and hopefully next year, it's not going to take. So thank you for more procedures. Thank you, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay. Integrated pre-K program. I'm going to turn this over to superintendent, superintendent question.
Yeah. And I'm going to get Alida to bring it up. I think she's doing that right now. And basically, this is just to give the school committee a sense of the December twentieth meeting. You'll recall that we had made the decision to host a parent information meeting that night rather than a school committee meeting. And you'll recall too that I had mentioned that this was an administrative evening, so it wasn't something that was necessary for school committee members to attend. I know a couple of you did, but it was certainly not my expectation that school committee members would attend. There's nothing new. There was going to be nothing new presented that night. I know, Mark, you were there that evening. I know, Lorraine, you were as well. There was nothing new presented out there, and so there's nothing new that I'm going to present tonight either. But I wanted you just to get a flavor of what we presented. At that meeting, the same kind of group sat there as you had here tonight too. Again, your elementary principals, Joan DeAngelo's and Sidney Maxfield. We're going to go quickly through this. I know that you can read, so I'm not going to read through. Did a broad overview as to one of, why we were taking a look at it. We broke it into three points. We had submitted questions. That's, the submitted question component was, I did that as a result of what we always did at state level. We always had submitted questions rather than free flowing because then if you do free flowing, then there's a penchant for somebody to take up more time than somebody else or whatnot. So we always had, with the commissioner, always had submitted questions. And that way, you kind of were able to attend or group. We got a lot of questions, for example, that were all basically similar around one theme. So I was kind of able to take like five cards and rework the question and respond that way. And then at the end, I thought it would just be five or 10 minutes. That's not what happened. It turned out probably to be about twenty five, 20 minutes or so. The principals and Joan and myself kind of took additional questions. I took the overarching questions. Joan, who were more specific, was fed. And then each of the principals were there to respond to, with any questions with regards to their communities. Well, there we go. Why the review, talked about the program reviews. I mean, it's not just pre-K that you've asked me to review. It's everything, including like the athletics and facilities and everything else. Pre-K just happens to be one of those. Talked about the forensic audit, the fact that the forensic audit wasn't just about money. It was also about program improvements. You'll recall, for example, there was a list of program improvements for special education that came out of that forensic audit. And we paid attention. We created the corrective action plans, the caps for all of those and went through those to do it. So I explained that, the district-wide purposeful planning, why we take our time and we're thoughtful with the work that we're doing and the fact that, as Lynn would say, this was a directive from the school committee. Talked about the fact that we examined the current model, the DESE guidelines, because that's really what we have to abide by. We took a look at the three years of the NRSD trends and then we charted our own data. Sidney, one of the questions that was asked, and I just want to put it out there because I thought, I thought it would be more complicated, but it's not. Somebody had asked about the number of special education children in the pre-K program over the last several years. And Joan and I had had some discussion on it. I don't think it's ever gone over thirty across the entire district for the last three to five years. It's always been thirty or, oh, actually, under thirty. So keep in mind that that is the target of population that we have to look at in terms of integrated preschool program within a public school environment. Put up the definition of just integrated preschool, just to remind folks what it was, which you all know. Talked about realigning of the community programs and that we want to make sure that our kids are in the schools where they're going to, so that you don't have to move between community and community in terms of their programming beyond pre-K. So we took a look at that. Ran over some of the frequently asked questions. There weren't a lot of new questions that came to the table. There were some specifics, but very often those specifics were more about their own children. We may or may not have had an answer for them, to be honest with you. So we did, we did our best because we really have to wait and see how the numbers are fleshing out. But I think, Joan, we were talking today, I think you should have letters shortly with regards to it. And basically, I mean, the programs are kind of all set now, to be honest with you. They fit very nicely together. Once we got all the names in of all the parents. So I think we've heard from all of the parents now, right?
We have, we have.
So there, you've seen, again, the school committee's already seen the frequently asked question sheet, so we'll just kind of go through that quickly to the next page. Talked about inclusionary models and substantially separate classrooms and how those were different. Should there be a blend of three and four-year-old models in each integrated classroom? We typically have it. I think, I think somewhere along the way, people thought that this was really a huge difference from last year and it just, it just isn't. Now, there are some spots that we're taking away. That, that's a change. That is the change. The integrated pre-K model is not a change, is what you've always had. So that's not a change. How we man the pre-K classrooms is not a change. So the change really just comes in the sheer number of seats. And keep in mind too that when we, when we take a look at this, we, I think there is a change of about 70 seats, but of those 70 seats, 52 of those were kids going into K. So that, so I think that people think that maybe, oh, it was all of that, and it just, it really wasn't. So just to kind of keep it in perspective. So I think those are the key. Something else I just want to allude to too. And it kind of comes on the heels of, was it Julian, the lady who spoke from Stowe? People talk to us about research, and I just want to kind of put this out there. School districts tend to follow very, very closely the research that is provided to us by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. They have an entire unit that this is all they do. The reason I know that is because it was one of my units. And so I know the unit very well. You have top-notch researchers in there. Some of them are educators and some are not, which is really interesting because it really keeps a really unbiased look at the research that they do. And it's not a case, I think sometimes people think if I Google this enough or if I put this term, that isn't really how research is done through the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. It's very, very thoughtful. You've got a broad team that works not just within the United States, but globally. And they bring the information forward and that's the information that goes to the Massachusetts Board of Education where these decisions that we abide by are made. So I think sometimes I think, people think, well, did you do your rea- Well, our research isn't from Pi Delta Capin or AASA or some of the, which are highly respectful organizations, don't get me wrong, they are. But that's not the research that we as a school district depend on. We depend on the really outstanding quality research that we are provided by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So I know that really isn't something here, but it was a topic that just kind of floats out there and I thought I would just mention, because I'm sure that people don't even realize that that particular unit exists or what they do. But it's, and in fact, it's such a, it's such a solid unit. They present, they present across the country on what we do in Massachusetts for our research. So it's top, it's a top-notch unit. So. So that's in essence, I think we wound up, I want to say about quarter of eight that evening, ten of eight. So I think it was, I think for what it was, I think Kathy, you had alluded earlier tonight, not everybody likes a decision that you make, and I understand that. And I think that, you know, if it was just philosophical, I mean, educators like myself always think more education is better. It doesn't matter at what level, whether it's post-graduate or whether it's pre-K. You believe in education or you don't do this job. Like, you just don't do it. It's in your fiber, it's in your soul. So it's not that I don't believe in universal pre-K. I think there's a place for it for those people that want to take part in it. As a school district though, we have to juggle what we're mandated to do. And I know how many other mandates we have to abide by that are unfunded, far beyond pre-K. And we have to juggle all of that. You know, as we said, and this is not a new analogy, but we talked about it again today around the table with the principals. The pie is only this bit and you can only divvy those pieces up in so many ways. And we have, as you had alluded to earlier, a K to 12, pre-K, like K to 12 spectrum that we have to really take a close look at. So that's, that's it for me.
I know it wasn't one of the questions, but could you add that description to the frequently asked questions? About how a research.
About research, yeah.
And the mandates, unfunded mandates.
Oh.
Well, is it really the unfunded mandates that, or was, I think, what I heard was the way that the department sets up.
So, and really, in some ways, so the school district, I mean, they're also looking to create a continuum across the Commonwealth, right? And I, so I absolutely understand that. So that you don't have this school district over here grabbing this and so and so over here grabbing this because there's, you're always going to have polarized viewpoints, no different than K. Some parents really want that full-day K, others do not, and they feel every bit strongly about that.
But it still has to be sustainable.
Oh, for sure. Everything we do has to be sustainable. You're absolutely right.
So what does Desi say about full-day K?
About free full-day K?
Universal K. I hate the word free. Universal K.
Pardon?
It isn't free.
No, it isn't free. That, that's absolutely right.
But what do they say?
You know, I don't know that I would.
But I don't want, I want to get the interpretation from the body.
Yeah. Well, it's, I mean, you don't have to attend, right? And so that also should send a signal.
But it also has, there's also a pre-K and K curriculum.
Curriculum.
Part of the curriculum frameworks.
Absolutely.
Which is a new, I think Massachusetts is one of the few states that has that.
Right. We have one of the best curriculums, if not.
Oh, no, I agree with that, but I'm just saying it's a mixed message.
Yeah. Oh, definitely, absolutely. I would, actually, that would be where I would come back to. I think it's a mixed message. But even if you look at how DESE and the EEC are combined, because really, pre-K really doesn't even belong in that, in Desi's bailiwick. It's really over here, right? You have the three branches of education. And pre-K almost really belongs over here, and then you've got the K to 12, and then you've got the higher ed, right? But there is a natural dovetail between the EEC and the DESE. So you have, you have to be aware of that. That's why there wouldn't be one body that you would go to to say, "This is, this is it."
In almost, almost every year this comes up and almost every year the same conclusion comes out. And different Desi, so you might understand it better, but by the time the kids get into second grade, can you tell them apart?
There's a lot of research. That's a, that's a great question because we've had that discussion a lot around our table as well. And there's a lot of research that shows that actually it tends to, tends to even out. Now, you're going to have some people that won't buy into that.
And I get that, but it's almost like, you know, as much as, in all the swirl of conversation that goes on, it always comes back to that one thing, second grade, they even right out. Whether it's, you know, the kid's personality or just development or.
All right, are we done with the, let's move on to subcommittee reports. Neil's not here. Kathy or Mark, either one of you?
Oh, we have the last thing we have. I think it's the last thing we have. I was sick and you were absent, so there was.
Okay, so there's nothing to.
No, before.
Sorry. And Elise, CPAC?
No, there's not a meeting until later this month.
Okay. Correspondence, clearly, I have gotten a lot of, and had a lot of good conversations with people, but I won't go into it here, but a lot of, well, some email, a lot of coffees, more coffee than I think I probably could drink in a year, but met a lot of people that had a lot of really compelling information, really healthy dialogue, and I really appreciate it. I still haven't heard from the group that runs the websites, which I find interesting. That I would certainly invite them, and I will not be meeting with large groups of people alone, given what's happened here before, but I'd be happy to chat with them about some of the interesting things on that website or in the invite-only Facebook page. But I think those are kind of mellowing out. Consent agenda. Does anybody have any questions on the warrants or the meeting minutes? If so, if not, rather, we'll assume that those are good to go. And items for next agenda, the calendar is in the packet, as it is every single meeting. We've got, I don't know what's going to happen, Brooke was, I think we're almost caught up. We are. So we've got another OPEB presentation coming in based on something you mentioned, you guys mentioned.
That was, it's another firm that we're bringing in.
A third firm.
Yeah, Pat's working on that.
There's also a, there's a tri-town meeting next week. It will be held in Lancaster. You guys seem in agenda. But just everybody, I'm not going to be here for that.
It's scheduled, one I will attend.
Yeah, well, not only will you attend, but you're, yeah. But just make sure that if the meeting is still going to be held, try to show your support for our towns.
Can I, would you be prepared to do your mid-year progress on goals on the seventeenth?
Yeah, I can.
It's just verbal, it's 10 minutes. Thank you.
So then we have Leach Field discussion. And when will the insurance review happen?
I think that's ongoing. Pat and Anne Marie, I'm not sure Anne Marie, the insurance review. Okay, we can't hear that, so perhaps you can help us.
There's a meeting scheduled later in the month.
Okay.
So that's something that, like, you know, I just want to make sure we're on the same page. We're looking for you to come to us with a couple of different options based on the fact that we think that there might be some opportunity for cost savings there, right? Oh, okay.
I think, I think that we're on the same.
Okay, good. I want to make sure. And then the SOI.
Yeah. I'll see if, if all the information is out there and I'm not sure how much is entailed in developing this SOI. I'm hoping it's easier rather than harder. It just depends on what I'm up against.
All right, so I'm going to put that on here. All right.
Lorraine, I have something to look towards is the sections of the policy manual, like those. Continue to chip away at that. I don't want it to interfere with the budget, but just keep that in mind if you have a light agenda.
Well, you know what, Susan, that's why January is so chop, well, besides the fact that I moved all the December 20th meeting minute, meeting agenda items there. But February, March are fairly light for the budget, so I think the policy stuff is really important. So if you want to put it on, put it on. As long as we have, oh, at least a week to review big chunks.
And there will be a ERTF meeting next month.
There will be a?
ERTF.
Emergency response?
Response.
Okay.
That's supposed to be meeting on Monday.
Okay, good.
Two weeks later, the health advisory.
Okay, great. That's good. And then Brooke and Alida, the staff roundtables. We need to jump on that. And I think, Alida, you probably have all the content from the last time. Kathy and I need to look at the results of the survey from last year and we might tweak some of those questions. But we need to start finding out when, and I thought I saw Kevin in here.
Who is?
Oh, there he is. Hi, Kevin.
Hi.
We need to start having the staff to find out when we can hold those staff roundtables.
Ross has graciously invited us to center school.
Oh, that's great.
Did you have a date?
No, I don't think you've got a date yet. He's got his pulse. Yeah, so you, I'll let you, y'all handle that. Okay. Anything else? No, nothing?
Actually, Susan, is the next section really good?
I can, we can get, we're almost done. So we can basically do whatever you, if you have time for a short section, I can have that ready or.
It's just that the more time I have, the better.
Yeah, yeah.
Because she does a deep dive. And so the next time we all meet will be the twentieth for our budget workshop, just FYI.
Oh, is there a meeting on the seventeenth?
Oh, yeah, the next time we meet will be on the seventeenth. The next time you will meet will be on the seventeenth. All right, I think that's it. I need someone to help us get into an executive session. Have a mic here? Yep.
All right, I move, ready?
Yep.
All right, I move that we adjourn the regular meeting to enter into executive session to discuss receipt of and response to open meeting law complaint. Under purpose one, receipt of a complaint against a public body, meeting will adjourn in executive session.
Second.
I knew you would.